Let the record reflect that I've taken role that all members of the utility board with the exception of Mr. Barr are present this afternoon having a quorum, we will proceed. The minutes from the March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two meeting have been printed, posted and circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There are no objections in the minutes will stand approved as posted. We move on to unfinished business this afternoon. First item on our agenda is the water quality testing. The results aren't in your packet today. Craig, any comments this afternoon?
Uh, no, sir. Just, um, y'all can review them and see if they're still well under the limits that we need to worry about, so. Uh, usually they get complete, uh, clean out, uh, removal carbon filter, uh, once a year, when you get flushed two, three times a year. All pens, all the testing goes.
Okay. All right, we'll move on then. Uh, the A R P discussion. I think we're gonna hold this off until we get into the, the project review and then we can talk about that unless anyone has any specific item they wanna speak about that right now. And then we'll talk about that in just a few minutes. Um, in your packet again today, you'll see the five-year plan, it's still there. Is there anything that anyone feels the need to add to the five-year plan? All right, we'll continue to work on those and see if we can get some of them completed. Uh, we move on to item D, which is, uh, the report from Burgess and Nyquil on the forty-fifth place main, water main replacement.
Uh, yeah, we, we had a little holdup on that because of surveyers. I did speak to them, uh, yesterday and they are gonna bump that project up. They will be in there next week. We called Miss Utility in today, uh, location of utilities, so we can map them out. Uh, they're moving in to survey the whole subdivision. Uh, locate existing meters, existing utilities, uh, plus acquire the, the right of ways that I would need to complete this project. Right now, we do not have any right of ways for water line extending property or through the properties, so we need to acquire them, then get reports to Lisa, then she can finish up the design work, I think.
I have a question. Um, so the Burgess and Nyquil contract, I know that ends at the end of the month, and so how does that get extended so that we, we continue on this project?
I'll let Craig answer that, so.
Okay, cuz, well, that's fine. I mean, I just read the contract and I, it, it says April, I think twenty-ninth or whatever, the end of the month, so I didn't know how that was handled. Um, but if it just continues on, that's, that's not an issue. I just don't want it to be a stumbling block where we have to come back and, you know, re-up a contract to continue. That would put us further behind.
Okay. So, then let's move on to the wastewater and wastewater improvement project.
All of the costs, um, lost information that Michael Griffith had requested for the water project, the wastewater project are in his hands, so. Part of the thing that he's, I mean, he may still be waiting for some information from the city, but we've given him everything that he, that he's asked us.
Okay, yeah, and, and we're behind, uh, from the city side because we're in the middle of an audit right now. The auditor just showed up. And so, um, unfortunately, we had one of our, um, long-term employees pass away in the finance department, so they're running a little short. So, but Amy's very well aware that this is a priority and she just can't get it all done, so we'll, we'll do the best we can with that. So the, the dredging of Pond Run and the Greenmont Dry Dams.
No, nothing to report this month. Mike, there's nothing you're aware of, is there?
Okay. We did apply to both Congressman McKinley and Senator Manchin for the earmarked money for both of those projects. It's a crapshoot, you know, if you get lucky enough to get pulled out of the, the mix, you may get funded, but we've done everything we had to do and, you know, we submitted all the drawings that you all did and then we got letters of support from the community and, uh, from the Parkers Utility Board and, uh, so anyway, we're in the process. Whether or not we qualify, I don't know. See if we can, you know, get there, but we are moving forward with that, so. Which brings us down to the Twenty-Eighth Street Storm Drainage Report.
Yeah, Mike, uh, you know how good your drop box is, right?
Put that in there.
I, I, I'm, okay.
You're too cheap to buy magnifying glasses, isn't it?
Too late, so we'll email us, so.
Man, look at this. Woo!
So the first sheet there, uh, shown before, and that is the, uh, existing storm, storm system that's out there. You can see that, um, um, most of it is in pipe there, uh, along the path where the issues are going up, clear up into Twentyninth Street, um, Fifteenth Avenue. Uh, but, you know, there's no real sizing or anything that was done to design it. So we looked at the, the second page in. Is based on the flows and looking at ten-year storm, but what size pipes we need. Um, you can see we start down at Pond Run, the, over left-hand corner, with a thirty-inch pipe of the, the, I just realized that about the blue squares. Blue squares are, um, proposed, um, infiltration basins, drainage basins. Haven't really put a true design on that, but we just designed around the storm chambers. Um, and comes up, uh, I guess, I don't know what you call this, Fifteenth Avenue, I guess, front of Jackson. Uh, over to Thirtieth, where we have lines going both ways then, but the main line going, uh, on east. Over to another basin, which would be, that's the old, uh, Whirstone Church there, their lots. Uh, you know, open space there, propose to do something there, um, then follow basically cross-country like the ditch goes now up to a third drainage basin there. There's an, uh, unoccupied property off of Eighteenth Avenue. Then we looked at possibly put something in and then extending on out. The good thing is with all the slope that's there, the sizes aren't terribly bad. I was afraid we would get into a really big storm drainage sizes, storm pipes, but really thirty inches the largest. Uh, again, it's just because the slope's so great, it's able to get flow fluid. So we looked at that, um, as option one and, and we met with Craig the other day and Randy, and one of the things that, well, that's your brother, I don't know. Goodness, again. Okay, when you start looking at the cost for that, that project, it's estimated construction cost about five point four million dollars. And then when you look at project costs, which would include, um, engineering, legal, those kinds of things, um, brought up to, uh, about six point one. Okay, yep. So, uh, when we met, there was a question, well, how about if we did this in phase, so we didn't have to put, you know, six million dollars out in the beginning? So we looked at a three-phase system where it starts at Pond Run, uh, go up to the intersection of Fifteenth Avenue and Thirtieth Street would be phase one. And then head east or over to the end of the system there at just fourth and Nineteenth Avenue. And then the blue lines are the smaller collector lines to finish picking up flow. So it'd be three phases. If you look there, you know, it kinda splits up nicely and, uh, between assured of two million to three million, so. But it gives you the options there to look at that. And see how you would want to proceed. I apologize for my getting out sooner to give you time to.
Mike, I, I don't see, I, I know because of being in the meeting with you, but I don't see on any of your maps here what you're de-designating as phase one, phase two and phase three?
It's on the third map.
There we go. I got you. Thank you.
Yes. Green would be phase one.
So this is probably the worst drainage issues that we have in town, uh, simply because of the distance and how far it has to go. You're talking about clear up at Nineteenth Avenue and bringing it all the way to On Run. I mean, there are other areas in town that are a block or two, but this area here is quite a distance. Do you know what the length on this thing is, Mike?
No, I didn't, I didn't measure it.
Craig, what would you guess that to be? A mile?
All the pipes here? Yeah, possibly, yeah.
I wouldn't wanna walk it. It's, you know, the, the one thing is it's a hundred-foot difference from, you go up the Crestview and Twenty-Eighth all the way down to Pond Run. So it was exactly a hundred feet vertically.
Hundred-foot elevation drop? Wow. But, uh, anyway, I, I mean, this is something that we've kicked around for a long time, um, that frankly is never gonna get better. It's just not. You know, there are issues there when, and it's really when we only get those hard rains. But we've seen videos of Twenty-Eighth Street where you literally could float a boat down Twenty-Eighth Street. And as Craig Metz says very frequently, but it only lasts for a little while, and that's true, it does. We don't really have any ponding issues in this, but when you get over to Fifteenth Avenue, where it makes that last turn where Joe, you know where Ronnie Bumgarner lives? Right there is where the problem is, because it drops underneath the ground right there, but it's not big enough to pick it up and so consequently it runs right through his buildings. And then runs down until it gets to the next block and then it picks up the creek and then it takes it over and then it goes underneath those storage buildings that are there. And then, once it gets out from underneath the storage buildings, then it finds its way down to Pond Run. But those are the issues that are there. I mean, uh, there's just not enough of a collection system there to take that volume of water out. But I, I mean, in my opinion, this is one of the projects that we need to find a way to get done. And, you know, we can't afford to do six million dollars, okay, but, and working the way that Mike designed this, we have to go from Pond Run backwards. Cause you can't increase the flow up above and not have a way for it to get out. So if you build it from Pond Run backwards, then you slowly increase the amount of volume that you're moving. And, and that way, you know, hopefully it'll handle it, okay? Craig, how much of this can we do on our own?
Hmm, uh, the size of pipe, I don't see the Public Works Department doing any of this on the main lines, especially phase one. I know we talked about if you look at the blue section about retention system or detention system. Yeah, Mike and I talked, he was in the meeting about, you know, eliminating that and actually increasing the size of the pipe from thirty to, you know, thirty-six or forty-two. And then putting the outfall pipe in a smaller diameter, slow the water down, put the capacity in the line itself, but you're looking at possibly forty-two, forty-eight inch pipe. And there's no way we could do it in-house. These service, those little ladles come off like Thirty-second Street, Thirty-first Street, yeah, we could possibly do those, cuz we were talking about twelve, fifteen-inch lines.
So how deep are you gonna bury these?
The, the deepest is just because of how it lays out and we may be able to change it. Really, it actually is up on Twenty-Ninth Street because that falls the wrong way, proportion of it. So that gets a little bit deep and then when you get down to, uh, at Fifteenth and Thirty-Second, again, just cause it's a little flatter right there, and then when it starts going down, it, it's only ten feet, uh, super deep.
So you're planning on burying this ten feet deep?
Not all of it. Those ones would be three, three to four foot.
Okay, three to four feet deep we can work with.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, and that's that smaller line that Craig's talking about.
Thirty days we could do, first and second.
Yeah, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of right-of-way work that has to be done here in order to get permission to go through people's yards. And, I mean, this is gonna be a lengthy process to get that done, okay? Uh, and, and unfortunately, some of the areas that we can do don't really help, um, because like up there, that area that goes between, uh, Nineteenth Avenue down to Eighteenth Avenue, a lot of that runs on the surface right there in that drainage ditch. I mean, we could go in there and we can install that, but it's not gonna help until you get the downstream pipe connected, cuz all you're gonna do is make the next block down flood. You know, but as you said, working our way backwards, the most of that green line's gonna have to be done by a construction crew that can get in there and get it done.
Another thing during design is that, um, some of these storm sewers, you know, if you're sanitary sewer, relatively shallow, there may be a fair amount of field investigation by Craig guys with a camera truck. Tell them where the sewer service ladles are and how deep they are, so that when we lay storm sewer through there, we don't clip off sewer. There could be a fair amount of work there, just getting, you're finalizing the line.
I know that we've run into issues with the smaller diameter pipe being backordered if, if available at all. How much of a backorder and price increase do we have for thirty-inch, thirty-six-inch, forty-two-inch pipe? Can we even get it?
To ask about the time we're getting ready to start or order it, of the wrong order it now. Wow, well, that's a good point. I mean, if you're, uh, buy the pipe yourselves and then supply to the contractor, then, um, it'd be a good idea. We're here and folks doing that now. You know, pipe package, suppliers, and you just provide after the contractor.
Yeah, but you're, you're gonna put catch basins and, and other things every so often so that if we have a blockage, we can get in it to clean it out.
Absolutely.
I mean, how much difficulty are we having with catch basins now? I know car concrete was not bad.
We usually get car concrete, um, there's, there is the delay because of employee issues, but, um, I mean, I think we'd get more delay out of actually product of the pipe, I mean, concrete, I'm not worried about.
Where that green line is, does that run through the park down there?
Yeah.
Uh, is it like the upper end of the park?
It's where the old baseball field is, play baseball, I don't know.
I was trying to figure out where that came in at, into the Pond Run.
Right beside Thirty-fourth Street, Joe?
Yeah.
Okay, right there, okay.
I, I don't, when it comes underneath the, the set of storage buildings right there, is there a catch basin right there on the corner? I mean, how, where, where, where's it actually go from there? Straight down towards On Run or what's the angle?
It just runs right on the edge of Fifteenth Avenue and hit Thirty-fourth Street, goes right down the sidewalk.
Okay.
And there is an existing storm under those storage.
Well, there was. We moved it last year outside of the footer. Buildings were collapsing, so we moved it outside the footer area.
How big a pipe is that?
It's twenty-four inch.
So, in part of this right here, are you talking about taking a twenty-four inch up and replacing it with thirty or thirty-six or can you leave the twenty-four there?
Talk to Mike about that, cuz it, it, there's a low-line area through there that, and he, he's, yes, which is a good idea, leave that pipe there and just run a parallel pipe with it.
So that area before that, below John Dolman's property, or that may be John Dolman's property, is so wide and flat, it's kind of a scrub area right there? How are you gonna channel all that water or are you just gonna simply use the pipe and bring it right from Fifteenth Avenue and Thirty-second Street, Thirty, Thirty?
Thirty-four.
Over? Are you, how are you gonna contain that? I mean, what are you gonna do with all that water that's gonna lay right there?
That's why we're leaving an existing pipe in place to catch it, remove that water. We, this is gonna have a lot, a lot of flow on it, and I was concerned, which we talked to Mike about, means in, I didn't want, uh, that pipe being open to that low-line area, cuz I, I was worried about backflow, back pressure. So he drew up where, yeah, that pipe stays in place, drains the low-line area and, um, that ravine up through there off of Thirty-second Street and down, or Thirty-first Street and down, so. This new pipe will run parallel with it.
So I, I, I can't tell you right now. Where Ronnie Bumgarner lives on the corner of Fifteenth and, I'm assuming it's Thirty, it may not be. Thirty-first or Thirty-first, whatever it is, when it goes underground, you know, where we put the, the heavy grade in?
Right.
That pipe doesn't run all the way down though, does it?
No, it runs down through that woody section, opens back up.
Yeah.
There's an open channel between there and the warehouses.
So when you get past that second house, then it's open and then it goes through that wooded area and then it recollects into that pipe and goes in front of the storage building.
Right.
Okay, so that's my question. What are you gonna do right there?
Leave it alone.
You're not gonna put a pipe in right there to collect it? You're gonna just let it?
That existing pipe we'll leave in place. That pipe goes upon runs.
Yes, it does.
We'll leave it there. Outdrain that low-line area.
Yeah, yeah, that's my concern is the fact that if you don't do something, that, that area right there is gonna be very wet, cuz there's a lot of trees around it.
There'll be less water getting in there now after the new pipe than there currently is. Cuz once we install a new pipe, it catches all the service water off Thirty-first Street and above, which floods that area you're referring to now. If it's too much water, it pops out, goes out through the guy's building, floods that low-line area in the wooded section. Install a new pipe, takes all that water out of that channel.
So, where do you have the big blue square there, Mike? Down next to Pond Run?
Yes.
If we move that back up to that low area where it's going to be open, and let's say the city acquired that, that area that's right there. Could we put in a retention system right there that would actually hold that water and then slowly let it go onto Pond Run?
You gotta watch, I'll answer that for Mike, if he, he probably doesn't know the area when it floods, but there's a house that sits in that particular area, it's really, it's low. I would not encourage a bit of retention system in that area because there is a strong possibility you'd flood that house out.
Okay, so Newbury's are on the corner beside the bridge, and I think the next one is Foggins. Am I right about that? There's only two houses right there. So you're referring to the second one down? Yeah. I'm just worried about, I mean, you're gonna increase that pipe size coming down Twenty-Eighth Street and it's gonna hit that area right there pretty quick, okay? I mean, I can see that if we had a major storm, you can increase the volume of water in that low area right there very quickly.
Uh, no, a pipe's not gonna run tied to it. Everything from Nineteenth, Twenty-Ninth Street, Nineteenth Avenue will stay in, all stay in a new pipe.
And I asked you that just now. I said, are you going to tie that new pipe in to the one that goes in front of?
No, uh, we will not.
Right, you said you were gonna leave that open.
We're gonna leave the existing pipe there because the new pipe, Twenty-Ninth Street, Nineteenth Avenue, will be running a new pipe, which leave the pressure off of the pipe existing, that low-line area. So you gotta figure all that water's going in this pipe and this pipe is gonna stay there, which used to catch it all. Now it's not gonna, everything it's really gonna catch is that blocks, uh, say, Mr. Dolman's and the houses that we're referring to. That's all that pipe's gonna catch.
So you're gonna put the second pipe in beside the pipe that's existing?
Right.
To take the water past it?
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, be, wish I could show you on.
Why, we need a whiteboard.
Yeah, it, it run parallel with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to. I've looked at that area for retention systems, stuff, that house that's so low, if we have any kind of issue, it would flood it. Especially if we tied this section and all that, that would really put too much water there. I wouldn't, I couldn't guarantee the house wouldn't have damage. That's what we talked about, increasing the size of pipe to forty-two inch, say, Thirty-first Street down to Pond Run, what, Fifteenth Avenue? And then once you get down to the last part of it, decrease in size of that pipe, so we'll use that forty-two inch as a somewhat of a retention system. Keep that water compacted, so when we flush it out on run, we build into the pipe while we run it.
Okay.
We can even do it, Craig, you know, as long as the soils are okay, like we did for these people, we had pools in that, so that way.
Absolutely, we could, you know, we could buy a empty, empty avenue, fit chambers in.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know as well as I do, how many times a year do you go down there and clean the leaves and trash?
Quite a bit.
I mean, it, it just, it's a collection point's what it is. And I thought, you know, if we could, if we could acquire that, we could clean it up. We cut those trees out, you know, it wouldn't have so much of that debris coming down through there.
Yeah, went for the house, it'd be a really good spot.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Thank you so much. Next. Jeez. Hey, hey, you, right here. You wanna speak? Jeez. Okay, so anyway, we're back to this. So we've had them do the, the study for us. And now we have a pathway that we could remedy this whole situation up and down that, that area there. At this point, we do not have funding for that, but I think things are, will start to shake out and give a clearer picture of funding. Once we get into the system with Michael Griffith, I think once they start to turn loose some of that seven-hundred million dollars the state has, that we might be able to leverage some. I think once they start to turn loose some of that seven hundred million dollars the state has, that we might be able to leverage some of that money. But, you know, Mike, you've done a good job on this, and I don't wanna see this just get stuck on a shelf or put in a drawer in Craig's office and we don't do anything with it. I mean, we know we have a problem, okay? Right now, we've got so many irons in the fire that we need to figure out where where we're gonna go, what direction we're gonna go. Okay, so. We can find the money to do this, and I I would say we should move on this, but right now I don't have any funding source, okay? So, we're gonna have to work on that. Can we do, can we do state revolving funds for stormwater?
Uh, water quality.
Yes, but we we only got two point four million. That's not even remotely close to six point one. And plus, we have to take the River Road money out of that. We have to take Forty Fifth Place out of that. I mean, it sounds like a lot, but that it'll go really fast. I don't know. You know, earlier we were talking about the funding that was in today's paper for Elizabeth. Okay, now somehow they figured out the pathway to get that done, all right? And I I think honestly, the start of it is just get in the, get in the calendar for those people down there. Greg, you're more familiar with that than I am. We've only done it once or twice. You have to have all of your preliminary work and everything done before you go to the Infrastructure Council, don't you?
You have to have it too.
I don't know. They they've they've lessened the rules. You know, in the old days, you had to make, you know, your share of it and all that. They've changed that now. You don't have to put up a part of it. You can borrow the whole thing. They may have lowered some of those restrictions. But stormwater's a different animal. I don't know. So, where would you go for funding?
I'd wait to see. If the legislature's having a special session, yeah, I don't. Right now, Mike, what do you think? I mean, if it's, I don't know that we see a stormwater, we don't, I don't know if we see water quality issue. Correct, you Mike?
Well, just make sure, that's grant. You can only get grant where you always get loan. It's it's, it doesn't matter for that. So, if you want loan money, go get this one. Uh, but you know, one of the things that, you know, I guess I'm concerned about is we have all the, all these irons in the park, but no, nothing started design. And, you know, that's gonna be one of the things I think they're gonna look at when they start getting money for this, but shovel ready, you know, we always heard that a few years ago. And, you know, people doing that, gotta have their hands out. Just wanna make sure that you guys are out there with your hands out, also saying, hey, we're ready, ready to, so.
Yeah, but you know, the timing, and and timing's never good. It just isn't. But the timing right now is really bad. Because on this upcoming election, you are going to have a school bond levy. You already have a school bond levy in place, so if it passes, you're now gonna have two bond levies on there. Plus, the bus, the transit authority levies on again, which means you're gonna keep that third one on there. And so now, we go to the people in Vienna and we say to them, hey, we have to have a rate increase in order to fund this, because we can't meet the the bond covenants or whatever, all right? Now, you know, these homes in Vienna are expensive homes. And so, when you start calculating what it's going to cost for a two hundred thousand, a three hundred thousand, a four hundred thousand dollar home for just those bonds, it's a lot. And now, we're gonna tack on a a rate increase, because we have to have it in order to fund these projects. I mean, you can only squeeze so much out. I mean, people are gonna start saying, you know, wow, what are we doing here?
Plus the rate inflation right now.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and and the timing's terrible, but I I don't know about you all, but I personally feel like we're getting farther and farther behind. We've got all these projects that we've tasked you all to do for us, and now we're getting some of the work done. And it's like, show me where we've completed any of these projects. Yeah, because we haven't got the funding for them. Or we do have the funding for them, but we just haven't got to the point where we're actually gonna tap those funds. All right? It never gets any easier. It just doesn't. You know? So, if we can continue down the road with Michael Griffith and figure out how we're gonna go to the Infrastructure Council and ask for either a loan or, you know, a a grant. You know, they they should, you know, with some of the grant funding, they they should look at us favorably, but who knows? All right? But I I I worry about the timing, because, I mean, these bonds are not cheap. And, uh, and, uh, uh, it's, it's not a pleasant, pleasant sight. You know, any suggestions?
I guess the one thing I, you know, I'm looking at again with other clients, what they're doing, is they're going ahead and doing the design. And whatever they think is gonna at least be the middle of what they're gonna ask, or use their ARPA funds now to design. That way, you're not out anything of, these other funds don't materialize. So, that, you know, you're ready, you know, because they're gonna come in and say, hey, we got a three million dollar project that's on the books, ready. If we're back saying, well, we got the report done, they're gonna say, let's get the money to these guys who are really ready.
Yeah, but I hate.
That's what my concern is.
Yeah, but I hate to say this.
Yeah.
Your designs are like thirty days, okay? The cost estimates that we're getting, they're no good at all. You think you can take on a project that's five hundred thousand dollars, and then you turn around and it's eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars? Boy, that it's just, you can't plan on that stuff. And I know the design you're putting in the pipe, you're saying, here's where it's gonna be, all the specs, the engineering design, I understand that. But the cost estimate's the one, it's, you know, the thing we have to deal with. You know, the di- the design as far as where it's gonna go in the ground typically doesn't change. But that cost, oh my gosh. You know, we, I, I don't know. I think you'd be better off to have the money in your pocket and say, okay, I've got two million dollars to spend. What can we do? Because if you go the other way and you say, hey, I wanna run this project up here. I mean, I would have never guessed in a in a lifetime that this thing would cost six million dollars. That's huge. Okay, maybe you guys thought it would be that much money. I certainly didn't. Did you think it was gonna be six million dollars, Mike?
Oh, yes, five. It's it's huge. It is a big project.
Yeah.
The area. You're talking about some of the sizes.
This is just about. Timing, I suppose. So, with, I I mean, I feel like, you know, we're gonna be at the bond route, you know, and we know that, but how, when would that bond, when would that work be done in order to place the bond on the ballot?
But it is, it's, uh, if we're talking about loan funds, quote, bonds, they come through state programs. Um, they're paying you rate. You'd have to raise your rate. Um, when you have not, you're, you know, I'll ask you a question myself and answer it, is that when would you have to start making those loan payments? Is that typically, uh, the loan payments for some of these state related bond funds? Uh, don't come, do you not start making payments like six months after the job is extended? There's a, there's a time, there's a fair amount of time out there before you have to start making that service.
Okay, so.
Hang on just one second. The difference between what Kim's asking you and what you're referring to, Craig. The bonding that she's talking about is like if we want to replace the swimming pool. We had a bond when we built the fire, when we built the police station. That bond only involves the people of the city of Vienna, okay? And so, that kind of bond that you're talking about there would have to be voted on by the people to say, yes, we want to build a new swimming pool, and yes, we're going to spend X amount of dollars on that pool. The bonding that you're referring to goes to the Infrastructure Council, where you have to be able to prove to them that you have the debt service to take on that loan. Yeah, but the people don't vote on that at all.
Okay, that's good. So, yeah, that's my, a little bit of misunderstanding on my part, because.
It, the word bond, it it means a lot of things.
Yeah, and, you know, I know Superintendent Hasselfluke is certainly struggling with that right now and educating the public on that. So, I think, and everybody's reading the paper, and we're all aware, just like you said, Mayor. So, that clears it up for me. So, if we, you know, we're gonna have to get a bond to to do these projects, but that's not going to have to go to the voters to approve it at all. Okay, so then we're not on any kind of a schedule as far as I know I had called Mark Rhodes' office and, I don't know, it was a couple of months ago, and asked about, you know, if a bond was placed on the ballot for November, it has to be in like by the end of August, you know, and for them to put it on the ballot. Um, so that's not a consideration. So, but what you're saying is that if we, um, move ahead, then the projects would substantially have to be done before we have to do that debt service. So, we're not looking at something that's probably gonna happen in the next year, where we're gonna have to start making those payments. It's gonna. I mean, because timing is everything.
But the, but the other thing too is, if you're going to do a bond for a community improvement, you don't have to put it on the ballot like for a, uh, an election for state or local government. You can have a special election.
Sure.
I mean, we would just have to say that, you know, second Tuesday in August, we're gonna have an election to vote on the bond for the swimming pool.
Sure.
Whatever, so.
Yeah, I know, that's, I mean, that's just not favorable in the sense.
It's gonna be November, so, I mean, if you wanted to save the money of having to have an election. It's typically, in the old days, when we would do the our elections, it was twenty five thousand dollars every time you ran a, ran an election. I don't know what it would be nowadays, but back then, it cost you twenty five thousand dollars. That's why we went with the county on their same schedule. We saved money.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes.
We, we laid this schedule out a little bit further forward, is that if you're talking about a water or sanitary sewer project. Um, the mayor mentioned, we have to have a little portion of those. The infrastructure, just the, just the process of, the infrastructure council takes preliminary applications and do by the tenth of every month. It typically takes them two months to run through the process of re-gradivation where you voted for. Then, and you don't, you're not gonna go to public service commission first time on that schedule, so it may take us. If you decide, for example, you wanna do all of the improvements or the water project we thought outlined, at least that might be six, nine months worth of design activity. But then, once you get a design, then you advertise bids, and those jobs are, if that job is big enough, you're probably gonna advertise it five, six weeks on behalf of us. And then, once you get bids in, it's gonna take, that's when you start to close actually the zone process. It might take another four, five days to close that one. And then, maybe nine or twelve months of building, and once you build it, you get the, get the initial placement. It's out there. It could easily be out there two, two and a half years before you actually start.
Two years to the one we did, thanks.
Okay, well, well, I mean, that's so helpful, and I'd actually appreciate if you could outline that for, at least for me, that would be extremely helpful. But back to what Mike's point was, to go ahead and and to have this design work done, so we have something in hand to start moving with. And it almost seems like, because this, that is such a protracted process, that it seems like it makes sense to me to use some of this money so that we can get this done and and to start. We have something to roll with.
Right, you'll you'll lose, you know, if if you don't, you're just gonna shift that schedule.
Yeah.
Go ahead and have the design, cut that from, I can't see the designs. You're starting at your mid, and going from there. So, you cut several months off of the weight. That's the reason they say shovel ready, they they want it, so that that money can just flow.
Let me make sure that I'm clear on what he said. There's nothing that would keep a client of ours from starting the design process without having the information. We have enough information, there's reports. You can say, let's start designing. As part of our utility board, it's not that. They had us start the design process in some cases, but then write it for later and provide the infrastructure, where to go get the money.
Yeah.
It it can take three, six months of just your short circuit.
Okay, that makes sense. I I mean, I think the significant part of this project is actually going to be the legal work that's gonna have to be done. Just because you're going through such a densely populated area, and it's, yeah. That adds up big time.
Something I think we all said, people here right now. Everybody's fun. But you can buy, you're gonna, you can't buy that.
So, how how can we find out if they're funding stormwater projects?
Well, I know, well, I know, well, what I'm getting at is House Bill forty five sixty six, I keep back through that, that real path. Well, if there is, if there was wording in that legislation that they finance stormwater projects with it, then that's a plus. Yeah, but the big thing is, is legislators legislators gotta dump money into that account so they can roll it out. Not there yet. Money's just not in the account.
So, you think when the interims come up here in another month or so that they may take that up?
Well, yeah, I think this bully, Water Association, MWQA, I'd be, that's on, that's on legislature, that that, that's on the. And when we met with Governor, when we met with Congressman McKinley, he mentioned that, that Governor Costley. He mentioned that, you know, that Congress allocated all these ARPA funds, but Governor's not, the government legislature is not, put it in the accounts yet. I think they've not brought it in. It's like a million dollar, what, a one point three billion dollar allocation, two separate tranches of, yeah. I think that, I think that there should be some pressure from legislature. Anyway, so, I just like that money's, that money's based in the way.
Yeah, I think that's the, that's the point that they're trying to make is you were given this money to go to work, to invest it, to not leave it sit in some account. I think they're gonna, they're gonna start putting the push on you to get some of these projects underway. You know? So, what do we need to do then, Mike?
I'm sorry?
That's okay. What do we need to do now? Ask you to give us an estimate or a task order for the design of this?
Well, it depends. I mean, I I don't, if that's where you wanna go, you know, and I just, you know, if you wanted to look at then, as a phase one, is it all of it, you know, as a page one and two, I I don't know how you even wanna proceed, if that's kinda your decision. The next step would be when you made a decision what were the, that we can give the task.
So, Craig? What kind of money are you talking about to do to do the design work on phase one?
I'll switch, I'll switch you on us.
Tell us what we want?
Tell us what you, you wanna start designing all of it or just some of it?
Oh, phase one.
Yeah, watch doing that, because you got all the upstream flow coming to that. You don't want stuff to be the whole line, all of it, then when you figure it out, do it phase one.
Okay, great. So, then, design it for all three, but break it down into three phases?
Yeah.
Okay, so if it's like, you know, five thousand dollars to do it all, and it fifteen hundred dollars a piece, I mean, we we. Okay, so if it's like, you know, five thousand dollars to do it all and it's fifteen hundred dollars a piece, I mean, we, we can work with that. Right, Craig?
Yeah.
Okay, so would you please work on that for the next meeting? Okay? Are you alright? Was that Mr. Metz?
Yeah, no, I just, I just, we'll talk about it here, man. You might wanna change it.
We don't have to take it. It's just an estimate, right, Mike? It's just an estimate.
That microphone's gonna run out.
Alright. Anything else on the Twenty-Eighth Street Stormwater Drainage before we move on? Alright, so getting, going to new business, the preliminary budget discussion. Amy will have those done here shortly, uh, to at least start with the basics of where it has to be. I know in our discussions, it's pretty much a flat budget. Uh, there'll be some things in it and typically the pay raised at the city employees get, the utility board employees get. There was a very minimum increase in our insurance. It was almost nothing. I think it raised the policy like two dollars and fifty cents per employee, you know, so it's not bad. Uh, those are the two things that usually have an impact on it. But, you know, we have, we have to have our budget completed by July first. And so, you know, we're in April now, so we're gonna need to deal with it, May and June to get it done, so. If there's anything that you have, um, thinking about the budget, then we need to be aware of it, okay? Craig, have you submitted your numbers and stuff to Amy?
Uh, you know, we've talked about it and I just wanna go over a few things with you all and discuss it.
Then do, do it now.
Yeah, well, that's what we do. I, I, I ran a preliminary numbers. We, we should be seventy-eight percent of my budget, okay? That's what I, my guidelines are. We're at seventy-eight percent of the year. So, any above that number, we're in trouble. Any below that number, we're, we're good, okay, budget wise. Y'all guess what, what I'm over budget on in water and sewer streets?
Fuel.
Actually, no, it's engineering services, okay, professional services. So, uh, we're at the two hundred and seventy-four percent. Above, we should be setting at seventy-eight, so, uh, so. I understand that. We've done, we've done a lot of work this year, a lot of design work. That's what we should be doing. So we'll, we'll have to have a, a bump in that, uh, get us through next year. And keep in mind, this budget that we're gonna be doing is steer based off the current rate structure, which has not changed. Okay? Anything Michael Griffiths is gonna do for us rate structure wise, that is not gonna be included in this budget. We can't do it cause it's one thing you're doing anyway. So, this will be the same numbers as it was last year. We're running real good on, on, on some items, uh. And right now, in the water, uh, or sewer, we're setting at the total budget sixty-seven percent. So we're under that number of seventy-eight percent total budget wise. A couple items I'm way over. Uh, in water department, I'm setting at, um, sixty-eight percent also, where we should be setting at seventy-eight percent. So we're still under that number also. Stormwater, it's, you know, I haven't, I don't think the, the purchases, certain things we've done lately, it's not in here, cause, uh, I'm only running at forty-four percent total budget. So, next year's thirty-six percent. Now we, there's, there's numbers we got, we can, we can grow these, uh. This is budget, we'll have the pay increases for the individuals. And everything I'm gonna ask for is the two additional vehicles, or not additional vehicles, but two vehicles to replace the one ton dump. So we have, I have our system getting old and outdated. Need some repairs, so I need some, lots of pickup trucks. There's a rotation that we do. It's outlined, I, I presented, I'll present to you all too, uh, in general fund, y'all can look at the, look at the vehicles need replaced, but, uh, that's about it. So I'm not asking for really anything else. Anything I'm concerned about, if y'all read the paper and that Parks, Utility Board is doing an upgrade on the sewer plant. Uh, we're gonna be responsible for some of that, so our fees won't go up. What we pay Parkersburg is a huge part of our budget. So if that fee goes up, certain percentage, that's gonna pay it right out of my budget and we don't have a rate increase, so. Any.
Yeah, but we can blame it on Parkersburg. We can blame it on Parkersburg.
Well, yeah, but we still.
If they raise it to us, we don't have any choice but to pass it on.
I can blame a lot of people, but it's not, it's, I mean, it's one of.
Right, Steve?
Budget numbers any, but, um, so, we'll get numbers to you next time. Uh, we'll get to you wait for the meeting. Y'all look them over, or view them, if you need changes, we'll do it. It'll be pretty straightforward. You need the RNA, the pickup trucks, and, uh, numbers all gonna be the same. In that way, for the last three, four years, uh, we'll ride out another year. Unfortunately, we don't have this big company comes in and starts to use the massive amounts of water where I maybe get additional revenue, but our revenues are flat.
Question. So when are we looking at approving the budget? What, what?
Well, we'll have to be. First meeting in May was, the meeting in May when we'll sit down, we'll go over the budgets and give you my location. We'll have to have a special meeting after that. And we'll approve it at that time.
So, it'll, potentially is gonna get approved, approved in May?
Uh, first part of June, May twentieth is the objective time, which will have to change. So, first part of June, we can approve it or we can wait till the meeting in June and prove it then.
Okay, cause it's gonna bring me to my second question or point. Um, I, I've said this for a long time and it was, this has been discussed about within this board well before I was ever even elected to office. Is that we need to contemplate or we need to look at the commercial rates on stormwater? I know that that was looked at in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and the board at that time didn't do anything. And perhaps it was even looked at before then. But, um, you know, I would like to see us do that. I don't know if anybody else on the board agrees, but, um, for me, I think that we should, we should consider that, which would help that budget out.
Okay.
I don't know what the next step is to make that happen.
I'm not, not disagreeing with you. There's, there's, there's marriage. It's not really fair for some, our companies pay ten dollars and Walmart pay ten dollars. Some places at, uh, strip malls. You get one meter for thirty stores and they pay ten dollars. My concern is the mall complex this time, but we got the biggest, most impervious area that we got. We're struggling. It's the only issue that I have. I, I, I do think it needs to be raised or portioned out in the commercials. It's not fair for local mall, marbers, that's our grandsons will pay ten dollars and we got all.
Right, and I've said this all along, and I think that the fee structure that was proposed before in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen was very, very, very conservative, okay? If you look at stormwater rates, um, you know, across the state of West Virginia, and you go into a county like, you know, or you go to Morgantown or something like that, they're really, really expensive. And so, a place like the mall, they may end up paying four, five thousand dollars a month for stormwater. I'm not saying that at all. I think the jumping off place would be where we, where, where it was looked at in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. Okay, and I, I don't think that it, um, we seem to be on a, we, we seem to be really hesitant to touch it. But I, and I, I think that's a mistake. I think we need to start looking at it. And I, I, it's, we could come up with a reasonable rate increase. It's not gonna. Yeah, I mean, when you talk about multi-million dollar companies who are paying, you know, ten dollars or less than a hundred dollars for stormwater, when they have these huge impervious areas, I mean, that's just not fair. I mean, I, we, we need to look at that.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we have the unit base, you know, Tommy and I have worked on that several years. We have the unit base. When we say units, it's a thousand square feet of impervious, that's a unit. Uh, we have that calculated through different complexes throughout the city, so. And you can look at that, raise that rates, I mean, the minimal, whatever you wanna do, so. I don't think we could get that done this year. I mean, we could definitely look at, I think we should look at next year, uh, or next year's budget. The following year, I guess, so. And we look at this stormwater issue we have here, we're looking at sixteen dollar budget. It's not gonna get any cheaper for anything we ever do, so. And we got, if the bond passes on, on school, you got, you got a huge complex, we'll go on Forty-first Street, and you got a possibility, huge complex coming in where the new school is, so. And we gotta get it, read out water somewhere somehow. Later we're gonna get over the hill, so. We're gonna need money in stormwater. We still got a pond running, we just need to, we gotta address, so.
So.
I mean, they're changing rules on, on regulations or somewhere all the time. We gotta change and apply and, yeah, we gotta pay them fees. EPA comes and says, we're gonna, we want you to do this at, at your expense, and that's for getting built out.
So this is just a process question then for me. If, obviously, we have to have our budgets in place and, and, and approved in time or under, you know, statutory, statutorily, we have to do that. But if we contemplated in, you know, a stormwater fee adjustment and, you know, that would have to go through the council and pass and so on. Is there any reason, you know, the budget's gonna be set, but we could still increase the stormwater if we, if it would pass, if we could do that?
Absolutely.
We, and then, so I don't think that we would, you know, eliminate that happening for another year to consider that.
I'm just saying, budget wise, we have to stick with the numbers we currently have.
Totally understand that, but.
Yes, we could, come in July, if you wanna raise the rates on stormwater for, as, for a commercial, yeah, absolutely. That, that money would go into that kitty and we'd know what we could deal with the following year.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
So, uh, I'd say Amy will get y'all's stuff this shortly, uh, look over, ask some good questions and we'll try to work through it in the meeting in May.
Any questions for Craig? Okay. And we move on to the River Road Water Main bid approval.
Here we are. Boy, have you all got the numbers in your quarters, right? Well, I think we've talked about the project a lot. Uh, there is, we all knew that it would be an increase, uh, in product fees. Didn't quite think it'd be this much, uh, but. It is, we had three good bidders, uh, and with the fourth bidder we could have had, I stuck with him and his numbers were right there with him. He just, he was concerned about some issues and he left on the bid, but I, I did know his numbers, so we I think we got a good bid and there's some options that Lisa and me, myself and Craig, is, and we walked River Road the other day. I think we walked like four miles that day, didn't we?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so. Maybe possibly moving that outside right now, that the fees, uh, really kinda shocked me what State Department, State Road Department requires to do. For instance, paving over road, I didn't think it'd be that big an area that we paved. Uh, what they're wanting us to do is pave one lane priority from Thirty-second through, um, Grand Central, so that's a big price in this project. Uh, we're working, we tried to move some areas around the other day, some areas we cannot move. Talk about maybe moving the edge of the road so it wouldn't affect so much of River Road. Beg State Road to allow us just to pave that bigger section since they already fight, but they want us to fight it also. So, right now, we're best case scenario, we're sending eight hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and ten dollars to the project. Uh, hopefully, throughout the project, we can change the things and the price will go down. Do this project, I would, that's why I say it's gonna pay.
Craig, are you, when you refer to that paving, which line item on here? Is it twenty-six, I guess twenty-six?
One item paving, uh, you got, uh, what'd you say, line item twenty-six?
Yeah, it looks like maybe twenty-five.
Type A, B, C, and D, uh, you can type A asphalt construction, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and forty dollars.
And then the whole way.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Approximately one hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we can beg the state that maybe gives a break. Yeah, River Road's not that best condition. I know they just paved it. They, they paved it with the best material, okay? If you don't manage that road, I could have just deserved, you know, two foot of it, and you come back and pave that two foot section. That paved the whole lane. On the Twenty-seventh Street, where the Grand Central, we can get off, get off the road. We can go through the grass area and, and place concrete. At least did figure numbers up at, it was almost what? Uh, it come at eight fifty-two, five seven-three, so saving some money, not too much. And there's, actually, there's some qualities in there. If you look at the backfill materials, you have your cubic yards. State suggested that we remove some of the dirt and back end, like bank ground and stuff, we're open up weed, the dirt that we dig out of the hole was suitable for them, so we put it back in the hole. My opinion is there's no sense taking sand and gravel out of the hole and dispose of it and buying sand and gravel, put it back in the hole. Maybe save some cubic yards of that. And that was a, that was a huge price itself. That was, what was that, hundred and seventy-two thousand, like that, eight thousand, so. I know the mayor said that he's gonna try to block the state road. Yeah, hopefully. You can see that we're, we're struggling here, uh.
It won't budge.
Haven't touched it, ain't touched it red in twenty-six years. Nothing. They don't patch it, they don't solve it, they take the main hand.
It's a timing issue. They just paved it and they want it to look as nice when we're done, is what it does now?
They paved base, base two, where, base two force. When we get done paving, one lane will absolutely look great, their lanes will look like crap. Guess which lane's gonna look like crap? It's a lot of money coming out of our pocket and residents in this city for I feel that the road wasn't properly done anymore. So, we're sending eight hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. It's a, it's a great project. It is, it really is. I'm discouraged at the price, that was what we have to do, but I, don't, don't take that away from the project. It's a great project. Needs to be done. That, that'll help us if anything goes bad in the future, and it's gonna happen. As in the past, it's gonna happen again.
Well, I mean, for me, I mean, the decision's been made. We've made the decision. We just need to move forward, I mean.
So we, we've allocated approximately five hundred thousand dollars for this project because that's what the estimate said it was gonna be. Okay, so now that it actually came in, we're three hundred and eighty thousand dollars short, okay? So, it's my intention to go back to council and say, you know, we still have two million dollars left in the, in the ARPA funds, okay? Explain to them what happened, uh, with the cost of the materials and all that, and say, we need an additional allocation of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to do this project. And we need it now, because the longer you wait, the more the price is gonna go up. The guy that actually got the bid, has the pipe. I mean, if we award the contract, he can start, okay? He can. And I don't remember the guy's name, but he was here.
Well, yeah, Jay, actually, the supplier has the pipe, I think, yeah, he'd purchase it. Before the project was bid, so.
And if, if we would award the contract, then Allen Stone could start when?
Yeah, yeah.
I haven't talked to him.
We, we haven't either, yeah.
They have a hundred and twenty days. That, that's what we need. We need this done during school's out. I don't really want them starting in May, okay? I'd like for them to start when school's out. And we traveled road between them sections, and eventually they closed off a bit, so. I don't think they would, if we give them approval, start at first of June. Won't see any holdup.
I don't think they wanna start any of the railroad or, or.
Yeah, take a start.
Well. So. I have no crystal ball. I cannot tell you how council will vote on this. It's without a doubt. An insurance policy for the city of Vienna, because if we have a water tank, for whatever reason, that would rupture. We have the ability, once this project's done, to reroute the water supply and maintain every bit of our system that we would. And that alone gives us the ability to continue to run our city, um, in case an emergency would come, all right? And so, the reconciliation of funds that will be given, um, to council tonight. Shows that the water fund has, um, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars in it, okay? Now, in that nine hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand of it is our. Twelve-and-a-half percent reserve fund, which you're required to have. Now, you can spend that twelve-and-a-half percent, you just have to replenish it. That's why it's there. It's there for, you know, things, okay? So, you know, we, we've got nine hundred and forty thousand dollars in our water fund. And unless Craig breaks something, or we have a major disaster, you know, we're fairly good shape. But that's the unknown factor that you don't know. You don't know when something's going to happen, all right? You know, with the money that council's allocated, the money that we got from Wood County, you know, we need about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. To fund this project, okay? Now, I honestly have no idea whether council will agree to do that. In my opinion, that's the infrastructure that the program was set up to fund, and it's a legitimate. Beneficial program to do this, but I have no guarantees, all right? So we have options, so we, we go to them tomorrow, or when, as soon as we can, and ask for the additional four hundred thousand dollars. To fund this project. Or we have to go back in here and we take our money out of our reserves. And deplete that account down to where it's, it's a, you know, pretty good hit on that small amount of money that we have. But you can't take general fund money and do it with the water, it, you know. So, um, you know, I'd, I'd like to award the contract, I'd like to get this thing started so we can lock the prices in and get moving. But I think the best thing for us to do is the board is to, let's see what happens with city council. And the ARP funding, and if we can get it bumped. And have a special meeting and then approve the contract or whatever we're gonna do. Because I just, I, I don't feel comfortable taking a vote to approve that contract. When there's about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, it's not sure where the money's gonna come from. Okay?
Is there any reason?
Well, the money's been allocated for Forty Fifth Place. Forty Fifth Place is gonna be an eye-opener, too. I guarantee you, we're not gonna do Forty Fifth Place for, what, with the original numbers, with what, two hundred and forty-five thousand? And he's not gonna come in, you know that, it'll be three fifty, four hundred thousand dollars to do that. One street, one street, okay? And so. I, I, you, you're preaching to the choir, we all know that.
I, I can say this from my, my perch on council. I'm for this. Now, now, council has other considerations, you know, we, everybody knows about Jackson Park Pool and all that stuff, but. You know, the council has talked a lot about infrastructure being their top priority, and that was the top priority with the, um, ARP funds, et cetera. You know, we're in a situation where next month, we'll have the, the unexpired term resolved, and we'll have a new council person put in there. So that's gonna change the dynamics of council a little bit, but I don't, I don't, so I don't know how that's gonna work out, but I feel. From my standpoint, infrastructure, 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 top priority. I mean. You, if you don't have infrastructure, you don't have anything. I mean, it is, you can't do anything without infrastructure, and. The, the mayor's right, and Craig is right. I mean, this is the number-one project that we all, I can't say that was what I thought initially, a year ago, when this was first talked about. But, you know, it's been, we've discussed it thoroughly, and it's been examined thoroughly, and I, I'm, I'm for it. So, you know, mayor, as far as timeframe goes, and if we. Bring this before the council, then we couldn't do that for another two weeks on our regular council agenda, and then, are you suggesting, um. Two weeks, and then we bring it before this board, like in a special meeting, so we maybe can get this resolved in two or three weeks?
Well. First off, let me, let me answer that question in just a minute. Okay, anybody else have any comments? Gee, be Christmas. This guy's a user, isn't he? Go ahead, Craig, what's up?
I see communities, uh, authorize the award of a contract to such and such contingent upon. If council approves it, the board has already made the motion.
Any more comments? Okay?
I agree with Craig.
I didn't ask you. Any more comments from the board? Thank you. All right, so what I would like to do then, is I would like to entertain a motion that, that we approach city council. For three hundred and eighty thousand dollars additional funding out of the ARP funds towards this project, okay? And if we vote to do that today, then I will probably ask for a, um. Either a special meeting to deal with this, because we need to get on with this, or we'll put it on the agenda for the twenty-eighth. And it'll, we can just be a regular council meeting, okay? I agree with what Craig said. I don't think, in the big scheme of things, that. I mean, we need to move on this. I don't think we're gonna, if, even if we rib, rebid it. I don't think we're gonna get a better price, or we're gonna just delay it another two or three months, okay? So I, I mean, we can, today, we can authorize the contingent bid approval of this based on. Securing the additional three hundred and eighty thousand dollars funding, all right? Which I'm not opposed to doing that, because I really would like, like to lock this in, okay? But I also, as we talked, I would feel much more comfortable, you know, and obviously Kim's in support of it, I'm in support of it. You know, I, I feel pretty comfortable that council will agree to this, okay? But I, that's a, that's a, just a feeling. I don't have any, any insight on that, so. You know, I'd, I'd like to, to take a vote today to approach council for an additional three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in funding for this project. And then after that, uh, we can do a bid approval of the low bid based on the securing of the financing. Now, will that upset Allen Stone?
I, I don't. What, we talking two weeks?
Yeah.
I, I don't believe two weeks is effective. I think if you wait a month, like, you might lose the product. Because a lot of people chomping for bits at that pace. And I can't hold Ferguson down saying you need to hold a pipe for a thing when he can sell it. The pipes, you got a piece of gold, you can sell it, or where, so he gets more money off it before he's gonna sell it.
Can't argue with that, that's business.
Yeah, it's business, but. I, I wouldn't encourage it way too long.
Okay, so you understand the two, the two items. One, today is to, I mean, go back to council and ask for additional funding. And we, you know, we can definitely explain the reasons why, all right? And the second one is to vote to accept the low bid on this project. With the contingency clause in it that says, we'll work the financing out. In two weeks or whatever. By the first of May. It's only two extra days. All right, I mean, are you guys comfortable with that? Okay, if you are, then, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of a, a request. From the city council for the additional allocation of four hundred thousand, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for. Huh?
Four hundred thousand's okay.
For three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve the, uh, request for city council for ARP funding in the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. For the River Road Water Main project. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, then I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand, all right? Motion carries unanimously. So, the second part of that is, I, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the low bid from Allen Stone Company. In the amount of eight hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. For the River Road Water Main project, uh, with the contingency that, uh, we work out the funding by May the first. Does that sound all right, language-wise, Craig? Okay, so. By May first, and we, we, we won't hold Allen Stone up any longer than that, okay? We can't do it, we can't do it, all right? So.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we accept the low bid of Allen Stone Company in the amount of eight hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Contingent on, uh, working the funding out by May the first. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously, all right? So, um, who's gonna call Allen Stone? Would you please explain to them, okay? All right, um. I can't get on the agenda for tomorrow night. It's, you know, we have to have three days, and I can't do it. If they don't agree to that, then I'll call a special council meeting.
I, I think that the bid hole in the spec, is, is, what, thirty-six days, so there's not an issue?
Okay. Okay, then we should be good. Yeah, just tell them, you know. All right?
Tonight, right? Council's tonight.
Yes.
You keep saying tomorrow night.
Who did?
You did. You said tomorrow night, council, I didn't know if you had a special one or not, so.
Lori, did you read the minutes back, would you? Did you hear me say that? Oh, my gosh. Just a moment, please. I'm gonna put Lori Bond on this sheet, too. Okay, so council's tonight at six o'clock, you're welcome to come, it's exciting. So. Moving on then, the manager's report.
Last Friday, the pump, the Twelve Street, new pumps, like, went out in the paper for bid, uh, the bid had been.
Yes, sir.
We'll get good prices on that.
Putting him on the list, too. Go ahead.
If y'all notice, if you get to drive through Woodland, uh, Forest Hill section, there was a, um. Issue with the stormwater, we did, uh, we hauled about thirty truckloads of millings up yesterday. Uh, extended the pipe out, uh, repacked, the road was washed out underneath, uh, repacked that area. Hopefully control that erosion, um, until. Department, uh, gets enough money to maybe repave that road and put new drainage in, so. If you see a bunch of asphalt all the way to heal, that's just us. Um, we're trying to stabilize that bank in that area, okay? Concrete repairs still going on, um, Jimmy Harbor Construction, they're still doing it. So we have approximately four hundred thousand dollars left. For ongoing projects that, so. He's doing work on concrete repair, not only the streets, but in the street-side budget, he's also doing water and sewer-side budget. Uh, where we got water breaks and stuff, he's, he comes in and picks them for us. So, been working out real well for us, uh, big. Work relief off of my crew, so. And we are steered down three employees, okay, so. Interviewed a couple of guys last couple of weeks. This really turned out, uh, seemed like quality guys, but, uh, they. They're still not interested in working here, so. Continue on. That's it. Any questions?
So. Monday of this week. We concluded the sale or the purchase of Forty Seven O Five Eighth Avenue. So, the stofer's have bought a home or in the process of closing on a home in Davisville, West Virginia. That's the only place they could find a house. There aren't none in Vienna. And so, as soon as they get moved, then we're going to put the house. On govdeals.com and sell the house. It'll be a salvage bid where whoever buys the, the house has the right to take everything off the property. I did a tour of that house the other day, um, and I think there's some really nice stuff in that house. That someone, that's either a contractor or a builder, would be interested in. And I, you know, I don't have a clue what kind of money that we can get out of that house. But we will recoup some of our money back from the sale of the, it had, it has a kitchen that was just put in three years ago, that's absolutely incredible. Maple cabinets, um, marble countertops, Marble Island. It's got hardwood floors, it's, you know, it is, it is absolutely spectacular. And so hopefully, we'll recruit, recoup some of the money that we have spent. But as soon as that portion of that is over with. Then we will move to have it demolished, and then Craig will move on to do the stormwater retention system. One of our council members asked me to reach out and see if we could move the house. And so I did, and there was a company that, uh, recently moved a large building in Point Pleasant, West Virginia. And so I spoke with them, um, just to move the house without buying a lot. Or relocating it, or doing any of the construction that it would take. You know, 'cause if we did it, we'd have to put a new foundation in and all that. It was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars just to move the house. And so it was pointless to, to do that. So, we're back to where, you know, we've now bought the house, we'll do our best to sell as much out of it as we can get rid of. And whatever's left, and we'll go out to bid for someone like Empire or Bosley or Harper to tear it down, and then we'll be back to the. Back to the, you know, bare ground and.
Well, I thought he was bidding out to, they bought the house, they're responsible to tear it down.
Well, that depends, okay? I mean, if they only buy it to take the kitchen out of it, they're probably not gonna spend eleven, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars to tear that house down. Okay?
Yeah.
All right? You know, I. Well, I'd, I'd like to get as much mon, I would hope someone had disassembled the doggone thing. It's got two-by-ten framing underneath it. Two-by-ten, twenty-foot long, do you know what those things cost?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it, there's a lot of money in that house if someone's in the salvage business, okay? There's garage doors, there's garage door openers, there's hot water tanks, there's heating system.
We're decked.
It's, and it's got, you know, nice double frame windows in it. The siding that's on that house is a vinyl siding, but it looks like cedar shakes, okay? So you, I mean, if someone, I mean, you literally could take that house apart and rebuild it if you were good enough, you know? But at any rate.
I have, I have a lot of questions about this. How is that going to be written up in the auction? Is there gonna be a timeframe? And what kind of timeframe would be acceptable that you're considering?
Not very long.
Well, yeah, I mean...
I mean, like you get a month or, you know, two weeks or whatever, I mean, you come in, you get started, we're not gonna leave it halfway because you're gonna have to secure the house so that no one can get in it to, let the neighborhood kids get hurt.
Right. I mean, you know, that's my concern. I think it's very disruptive for the neighborhood. I could appreciate recouping money. I mean, I'm all for that, but, you know, you have to weigh that against, you know, what's best for the neighborhood. And then would, would there be a minimum bid requirement?
I don't see how you could do that because we, we don't place any value on it. It's salvage only, I mean, I have no interest in any of the things in the house, so if, if you wanted to say on there the minimum you would take would be twenty thousand dollars, what are you basing that on?
Well, that, that's to the point. What, if you don't have a minimum, you know, and you...
We reserve the right to reject all bids.
Okay.
It's, it's a nuisance if somebody comes in there and says, I'll give you five thousand dollars for the house. It's not worth the trouble.
No, it's not. It's not worth the trouble for the neighborhood, so, I mean, I think then, those are the parameters that we are gonna need to set out, and I, I think we still have to come before the, this board to get the approval to put it on gov deal, right? Like, just like we do at council.
We haven't even, because of the way, we've got sixty days before they're even out of it, then we'll work all that out.
Sure.
Amy's reaching out to the gov deals people. They've done a couple other, I don't remember what city it is, may have been Wheeling. Wheeling sold their police station this way, okay? So we're gonna gather some comparisons to find out what is the best way to write it up, what's the best options that we can have. I don't have those answers yet.
Okay, but...
We just, we just finished it Monday, so now we go to work on...
Okay.
You know, and, and actually, I mean, it's kinda like a two-step process, you know? First off, the utility board has to authorize the sale of the house, alright? So once we take the vote to sell it, because if you don't vote, if you don't vote to sell it, then it's gonna be demolished, okay? That, I mean, that's just it, and we have to do something. We wanted to land for the retention system, so, but anyway, that's, I mean, it has to be authorized to sell it, and then, you know, if there's anything in the contract that looks out of place, then we can fix that.
Okay, so yeah, that's, that was my concern, I'm just...
It's just like council with excess police cruisers or the equipment Craig's got.
Right.
And that's the same process.
I just wanna make sure it's just, it's worth it to do it because of the amount of, you know, effort it's gonna take and the strain on the neighborhood and the time and everything like that. And it may be, I mean, if we can get a significant amount of money out of it, I guess, but, and it may not be, but so that needs to be worked out.
And it may, if we don't get any bids on it, then it may be that we go to a straight demolition contract where whoever bids on it, so say, I'll tear the house down for, you know, fifteen thousand dollars or whatever it is, then they have the right to salvage whatever they want, which, you know, someone, if they did it that way, would, I think would do very well at it. But, you know, there may be, there may not be anybody interested in going in there and taking it apart. There may not be, you know? Depends only if you're a builder or whatever, you can use the materials, I don't know. But it doesn't cost us anything to list it on gov deals.
No, no, that's, that's...
Other than time, that's all we have.
Right. I mean, you know, obviously, that's, that's great, but, you know, there's just other considerations with this, for me, anyway.
Anyway, that's the plan. Once we get a better date, then we'll put it out and we'll get it in here for approval to do it and we'll move on, so.
Twelve Street, you're doing the same thing.
The Twelve Street Old Maintenance Garage, which the city leased to the Vienna Indoor Aquaculture Company, they're now purchasing the land. They had done it on a lease purchase and somehow they've managed to find the funding, and so they're going to buy the old maintenance garage and that strip of land that runs along the riverbank. You know, there's a survey for it. That's not part of the utility board, that's a city project, okay? And we, the city has already through the process of the lease purchase and all that, done all the authorizations for it. It's now, they're exercising their right to buy it, which we agreed to, I don't know, years ago, so that's it. Oh, the other parts that you're talking about, I know what it is. At Twelve Street, where the sewer plant is, in the back corner next to Cheddar's, there is a very large metal building sits back there. Used to be the old storage area for the back trucks and the big equipment. It's been empty now for a number of years since we moved to Sixtieth Street. And anyway, we're going to put that out for sale on gov deals as well. The building itself is not in very good structural condition, but the, but the metal that's on the outside is really good, and it's a big building. How big is that thing, Craig?
Forty by sixty, is that what it's called?
I was gonna say, I thought it was bigger than sixty, but anyways, forty by eighty building with twelve foot high ceilings?
Oh, yeah, fourteen.
Fourteen foot high ceilings. And so somebody that wants to build a barn or wants another building, can come in there and buy that thing, and that one's pretty easy to take apart, okay? You can take it out section by section, load it up on a truck and just go. The metal frame that's inside of it, you can literally take hold of those things and move them afoot. That's how bad they're rusted, so.
Value metal's there, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of value there, so anyway, we're gonna, we're gonna sell that one.
Just the building.
On gov deals, just the materials only, nothing else. And then, you know, we'll, we'll obviously keep the land. It's right there is where the sewer line runs through.
Correct. Our future's there on too.
Alright. But there again, that's another deal with gov deals, it's in the preliminary stages. What else?
That's it.
Okay. I did go up and look at your project on Twenty-third Street.
Good.
Looks like that ought to hold very well.
You see the stakes down, Twelve Street, they're done.
Are they done? Okay, good. Alright. Alright, Joe? C? Yeah. Lori? Russ? Okay. Alright. Craig, anything for you, last chance. Good deal. Okay. Alright, well, next meeting's May twentieth, which is a problem for me. We need to move it either forward, and we probably oughta move it forward.
Yeah, we ought to, yeah.
Okay, so can we do Friday the thirteenth? Oh, that's great. That's great. How about Thursday the nineteenth? What day works for you? Joe?
Whatever, it's fine.
Alright, we'll let you know, but twentieth won't work, so. Okay? Alright, if there's nothing else then, meeting adjourned.